All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. If I could have everybody turn their microphones that's up here on and with the mask if you can try to speak directly into the microphone, that'll help a lot pick up the sound. So now is the time for any concerned citizen to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda. Having seen none, we'll move on to consent items.
Move to approve. Second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
And Zamale?
Aye.
Under new business, item A, consider approval to hire a utility billing clerk.
Joyce, would you like to come up? I'd like to introduce Joyce Richardson. She was, uh, we had a lot of candidates apply, some very, very good ones. Joyce was born here in Jefferson, raised in Perry. Would like to come back here and be closer to her family. She were recommending that she start, she can start tomorrow at thirteen ninety-two an hour.
Awesome.
Say anything about yourself? You don't have to.
No.
Still have a lot to say later.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Zamalek?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Welcome. Yes, welcome. Item B, consider resolution approving FAA grant agreement, an amount of nearly three hundred thousand for an airport runway extension project.
This is the second grant that is for the runway extension project. Um, this is part of the entitlement funds that the runway or the airport receives every year. Um, this is using part of those funds. Um, typically that is a ninety-ten share with the FAA. Um, but with this year with the CARES Act stuff, they are covering the ten percent. So this also is a hundred percent funded for the airport. So this goes along with one that we approved last time for the one point seven to cover all of the construction at the airport, including the alternates that we had chosen. And then a couple of the, uh, the ASBIL AGIS survey and the FAA reimbursable agreement for deactivating the reals.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
And Zamalek?
Aye.
Item C, consider resolution approving contract and performance and payment bonds for airport runway extension project.
So this goes along with that. We were waiting for the second grant from the FAA so that everything was covered before we entered into the construction contract. Um, we had bid the project. Uh, CTI Concrete Technologies, Inc. was the low bidder. Um, the bids are the bonds and contracts have been reviewed and we're recommending of approval uh, to proceed and get going on construction.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Zamalek?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item D, consider approval of pay estimate number one of a hundred and nineteen thousand four eighty-four forty-eight to Keller Excavating Incorporated for Chestnut Water Main Project.
This is for work on the Chestnut Water Main Project through the end of July. Um, essentially a little bit behind where they're at now, but right now they have all the water main is, main lines are in place. They've been pressure tested, bacteria tested, and they've started to do work on the surfaces. Um, we've got a couple of storm sewers and sanitary areas that we've got to do some small repairs on. Um, but things are moving along, so we recommend approval.
We've talked before about, um, maybe a systematic approach of replacing water lines and stuff like that as that. You know, like maybe putting the city on the grid and saying, okay, except for, we'll focus on this part and that part as that.
Uh, no, we haven't had any discussions between us and the water department on getting anything like that set up, but that is something we can move to.
Yeah, they've more than had a lot of preparation for the water.
Sure.
What is, uh, what's the replacement material of what's most of these water mains made of?
Uh, most of the material that we use now is PVC, uh, thicker quality. They call it SDR eighteen, C nine hundred pipes with heavy walled pipe. Uh, the other material that is used depending on the situation would be a ductile iron pipe. Um, both probably have service life of eighty years or better, at least intended anyway.
I move to approve.
Second.
Sloan?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Zamalek?
Aye.
Hi to me. Consider approval of pay estimate number one for a hundred and thirty-five thousand to twenty-six ninety-two to Caliber Construction for Shared Use Path Project for work completed through July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty.
Yep, so this is for the Shared Use Path Project. They started on Central Avenue. They have, uh, most of that substantially complete. Um, all the concrete is in place. Uh, grading has been roughed in. Uh, they do have some, uh, final grading to do and then seating and stuff when, when we're getting into seating dates here in a week or so. Um, but everything's progressing. They have moved down, started excavation on Greenwood, got most of that prepped and ready to go. Uh, retaining wall is installed down there. Right now they're working on some pipe extensions and some, uh, storm sewer stuff that we got and should be seeing some pavement done down on that here very soon. So making good progress and we would recommend approval.
Yeah, I think everything I've seen so far, they're moving quick and it's looking good what's done.
I'll second.
Jackson?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
And Zamalek?
Aye.
I apologize. Uh, I should have said at the beginning that item F is off the agenda for those following along on paper and at home. We'll take item F off.
It was actually part of consent, huh?
Yeah, it was consent item. It was just a duplicate, so.
Yellow copy.
Yeah. So we're on to item G. Consider approval of construction change directive for one-ten East State Street Project. Mike or Nick?
This item, this, this is a little bit different type of item. It was recommended by our architect. Typically you have a change order put in place first when they see there's gonna be extra cost. This type of project, so, so much unknown on it that it's called a directive. Um, it's just saying, it's allowing the contractor to continue work, not telling us here that there's going to be a change order coming. So it's, there's a certain amount of trust involved that it's not gonna go out of control, but otherwise they gotta stop and pull up and try to figure out a lot of unknowns before they even get there. So, um, a change order is coming. This just keeps them working. So you're just being asked to approve a directive.
I, I will move to approve that directive. Second.
Zamalek?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Would, would that be the alley project? What's one-ten East State? That's, that's Angie's Tea Garden. Well, that's not one-hundred. That's not one-hundred? Okay.
Another scratch one-ten from the record. It's one-hundred?
No, typo error.
I assumed, I was, that's what I was assuming you were talking about anyway.
Wesburg's working on one-ten, East State, we got it wrong.
I was in the assumption that was Angie's, uh, as I read it.
That's strike number two. All right. So H, consider resolution approving change order, accepting completed construction and authorizing final payment for relocate Green County Road two forty-third street project. Jim?
So this is the road relocation project out on the south end of the runway. Uh, the contractor completed it. At the last meeting, we, we, uh, approved a certificate of substantial completion. This is basically saying that it is finally complete now. All punchless items are done. Everything's done. Um, and basically approving a pay estimate number four for release of retainage that's been held. It's been thirty days, so we can release it. And then a change order, which is just a final change order balancing adjustment so that all contract quantities are adjusted to their final quantity amount and then the contract amount is adjusted to the final pay amount. So it's just kind of a, an accounting step. So, um, but everything is done on that one and it's good to go.
What's the, uh, pay estimate number four amount and what's the, uh, the change order amount?
I was gonna comment that the change order is actually a minus forty-two thousand dollars. The quantities were less than they were originally bid, so.
The, the reason, the release of retainage is twenty-six thousand eighty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. The final contract amount, as Bob stated, was a net decrease of forty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars, which took the original contract price of five hundred and sixty-three, eight ninety-seven, forty-five, down to the final amount of five hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and forty-five cents.
Free money? Cause it was all funded through grants, right? That project?
That, the, the actual construction portion was a hundred percent grant funded. But if we have an overage on something else, we have a little more cushion though.
Right.
Cause it's all, it was all lumped together as the road relocation, construction and design and construction of the runway extension.
Gotcha. Okay. Yeah, I've driven that. I, I thought they did a nice job.
Yeah, everything turned out very, very well.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Zamalek?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Item I, consider approval of professional services with Atura Architecture of thirty-nine thousand for Green County Animal Shelter.
This is something Don Ores talked about at our last meeting. This would be for the architectural services. I wanna point out that you'll be seeing another addition to this thirty-nine thousand, cause this does not include the engineering, civil engineering fees to prepare the site, which is another thirteen thousand, I believe. So rather than try to amend this tonight, it'd just be a lot cleaner if we just put that as an agenda item for next, for next meeting.
I will make a motion. We consider the professional services with Atura Architecture.
I'll second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Zamalek?
Aye.
Item J, third reading of an ordinance adding chapter forty-eight noise control. Does anybody heard anything? Mark?
Uh, do you comment and say?
Okay. Haven't heard anything since our last meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Jackson?
Aye.
Zamalek?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
Item K, review of twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty fourth quarter financials.
In your packet, in your packet is several, um, pages of our financials at a glance. This is for the, for the entire year. Um, naturally there's a lot more detail behind all this, but this is kind of the general summary of it. Um, don't see anything out of really the ordinary. Um, some numbers are a little higher, but we feel comfortable whether they're higher or lower. We have them accounted for. Uh, we've talked to Harry about it, um, our finance committee. Try to, uh, we try to review these numbers all the time. I know Malady goes over them. She actually puts them together. So overall, we're pretty comfortable where we are on this. It's gonna be a good tool to bring into our, when we start our budgeting process, which is the next few items coming up.
Any questions, concerns, anything? Bob, we need any action on that?
Just a report.
Yes, it's more of a report.
All right. Item L, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget schedule and priority surveys.
Well, as I mentioned, this, this is part of the budget process. We go through this every year. Um, in your packet is the updated budget calendar. And so you'll be seeing your committees as we move along. You'll be seeing when you're, when we're meeting, different, different items, due dates on this. See, it's a, it's quite a lengthy process. It'll end somewhere in May. So, um, the other item is the priority surveys. That's what really triggers it off is those are in your packet. There was one page. I noticed it just, this didn't get scanned in, so I handed you a hard copy of that. It's the second page of the priority surveys. Thank you, Harry, for catching that. But, um, I think we have it, it says on the, on the schedule when to try to get those priority surveys back, cause they're very, very helpful to, to keep the process going, get the direction right. And I encourage, if he's on the priority surveys, if you see something additional that we need to add, you know, please, please feel free to write in or call me or whatever. We can get, get that on there for when we have our discussions.
Mike, maybe, um, and we can touch on it again when, when the surveys are back and we report on it. But do you want to speak to, um, I guess how we're quanti, maybe, maybe the approach of how we quantify it? Because sometimes when things come out of here, it looks like things don't matter as much when it's really not that. It's that they've been dealt with and, and maybe they don't need as much attention. Not that they're less important, but.
Yeah, that's a good point. When you look on those, those tabulations, I handed the ones out that started all the way back in two thousand and eight. There's some that you see were real, real high and then they dropped off. Well, chances are that those were complete, either completed or they said, well, let's just keep maintaining those. We're happy with how they are. Um, a number of items have just been dropped off over the years just because they were completed. Um, like Matt said, it's not that some items just because they rank low or are less important. They're just, they're, um, they're still a priority, but just kind of gears staff how much time to put towards something. And sometimes they move up during the year, but that's when you start talking with the council if you want something moved up or maybe lowered down a little bit. Um, like I know a line item in there is grants. Yeah, grants are always really important. It's always gonna be a high priority, but it's, um, sometimes we're, we can't spend all our time on that. We gotta pick and choose what, what grant we wanna, we wanna get and not sacrifice something else. So there's a lot that goes, there's a lot that goes into it. That, that's a good, good point to bring up. Um, it's just, just cause it doesn't rank high, it doesn't mean it's not important.
So how would you like us to fill this out? For instance, you know, someone might say, well, the animal shelter seems to be marching on. It's, it's doing well. It's doing what it's doing. I don't think that's very high priority. That needs a lot of attention. On the other hand, it's something, you know, that I think in general people want. So then someone else might put that as a very high priority.
Well, and that's where, as a group, if you like, some mark it one as a high priority and others two, three. When we get a big split along there, that's when we start talking about where do we really need to be here? Um, if you're kind of doubt, you're satisfied where it is, you might wanna put a two and make a note by it. Let's, let's keep this moving.
I think that's the, that's the, kind of what I was getting at is that, you know, maybe for a couple of years, something was a high priority and we, we did all the legwork to, you know, make sure that money and time was invested in those things and now they've plateaued and they don't need additional funding. So maybe they're not a, a priority as high. I mean, because we made them a high priority, now they've been, been dealt with. So it is kind of a.
Right.
Little bit of interpretation there.
Well, it is, and I think that's, that's where a comment, rather than just a one, two, three, you know, it's a two to me, but it's a two to me because of this simple reason. And I think that helps clarify it too.
It does. And in your pack, it's the priority comments from last year too. You can kind of see some of the comments that we had and then the comments that came out of our meeting. Um, it really, it makes a difference because it guides quite a bit. There's a lot of clarification that really helps with that when we have the, the combination of your written ones and then we can get together and talk as a group to clarify things.
Not action needed, right?
There's, yeah, there's, there's not, there's nothing, no action to take. Really, your, your next thing is just to set that priority budget date.
So item M, set a priority workshop date.
By the schedule, I believe it's, it's, um, it'd be on September twenty-second. That's one of our regular council meeting nights. And what we try to do is, is conclude our regular business, stay in session and just go right to that workshop. So we're not having a special meeting for it.
Sounds good.
So I don't know if they need a motion to set that, Bob?
I'll make that motion. For September twenty-second.
I'll second.
Aaron Holtz?
Aye.
Jackson?
Aye.
Sloan?
Aye.
Weetrick?
Aye.
And Zamalek?
Aye.
All right, we're on to reports. Jim?
Uh, talked about Chestnut Shared Use Path. Arch Alley, the contracts are done. Uh, we should be setting up a pre-construction meeting here soon and get that one going. Um, it's the same contractor that's doing the shared use project, so I would assume he'll probably slip it in sometime this fall, since a couple of the segments of the shared use project have a spring completion date. Um, the other thing we're gonna give an update on, and it's gonna be a little more long-winded than normal, is the wastewater treatment facility. Um, if you recall, uh, in, back in two thousand and seventeen, we did a nutrient reduction feasibility report. Uh, basically talked about how we can adapt the plant to meet the, um, upcoming requirements for nutrient reduction through the IODNR. Um, so that had a set of dates to meet in it. As part of that, uh, the end completion date of all that was, uh, December first of two thousand and twenty-four with the plant operating and had been operating for six months with the nutrient reduction items in it. Start backing that all up. We're working on right now the feasibility, the wastewater treatment, uh, facility plan. In that, we're discussing basically two options for the plant. One is a update and improve onsite. And then the second would be a new location with new equipment. Um, we will get opinions of cost, put together on all of those, go through all of that. Um, a couple of weeks ago, we had our kickoff meeting with the IDNR to discuss making sure we have things in place that they need. Um, at that time, they wanted an anti-degradation report, which is basically a report stating that anything we're going to be doing for treatments is not going to, uh, harm the waters downstream. So we've got that put into our system now and we'll be looking at submitting the facility plan. Um, the degradation report here in the next month or two, and then the facility plan we plan to have submitted for December first. Um, we had a meeting last week where we met with wastewater treatment staff and a couple of city staff to discuss kind of looking at and start looking at financing options. Um, this is gonna be a significant project cost-wise, so we're looking at some, a couple of the main options we're looking at are like USDA and SRF state revolving loan funds as sources. Um, they both have their positives and negatives, so we'll kind of look through options and see which one seems to work out better. Um, and then proceed on that route. Um, and then, like I said, we'll submit the facility plan in December. Um, project placed on the intended use plan list in March, and it has to be on that intended use plan with, list with the DNR before it can receive any SRF funding. So we have to kind of get that in place. So we can start doing some of this before we even know what funding we're gonna use and do some of the steps we need to, just to make sure that if we decide to go that route, we're covered already and not delaying anything. Um, engineering would be, uh, pretty much through, uh, between the middle of two thousand and twenty-one to the, uh, fall of two thousand and twenty-two, about an eighteen-month schedule. Uh, that's not full-time engineering the whole time. That's, uh, submitting stuff, getting responses back from the DNR, working through issues, that kind of thing. So it just kind of takes some time sometimes. Um, and then looking at starting, uh, submitting construction permit application in June of two thousand and twenty-two, uh, begin construction December of two thousand and twenty-two, uh, complete construction about the June first of two thousand and twenty-four. And then we have that six, six months of operating and optimizing the plant to report to the DNR by their deadline of December of two thousand and twenty-four. So it's, it's a long ways out, but when you start backing up all the things that we need to do and what we need to get lined up, it gets to where we've gotta start working on it and get it going now. and what we need to get lined up, it gets to where we've got to start working on it and get it going now. So that facility plan will be in the next couple of months. We'll probably be having a review of that with, with staff and possibly at the Public Works Committee meetings. And I think that's it for me.
All right, thank you. Roxanne?
No report.
Bob? Mike?
A quick report. Talked with Harry of the finance committee. We're going to start scheduling a regular finance committee meetings on the 4th Monday at 10 o'clock of every month. I think there's a lot of, a lot of ground we can cover with policy and just updating the council on our, our financially. So just kind of a heads up on that and start seeing that as a regular, regular meeting time. That's it.
Sounds great. All right, we're going to have reports from departments. Nick, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Well, I'm moving on the spot. Right there. Thanks. So part of that change directive is for the, as we're tearing down the interior walls on the second floor of the Tea Garden, we're discovering there's a lot more masonry repair that's needed. And also what we're discovering is the walls were actually moving with the stiff wind. And what you guys approved tonight was work that they've already done, that with the winds we had yesterday, that I'm convinced that would have been sitting on top of Henkel and Associates around in the street. They have their process down right now that I think we're saving on the labor side of things. Things are getting done a lot quicker, even with the added items that we have to do. But it's moving along, so that's all I got.
Thank you. Mark? Oh, wait, Mike?
Well, I have to mark if he wants to go. I just wanted to say something for Dave, Dave Moreland, since he couldn't be here.
Sure. So, go ahead.
Well, just since Dave Moreland now is, he's down with their, this little problem we just had with the windstorm coming through, he's down right now pushing up brush at Dobbin Deck. One of the biggest things he and I talked about would help the city overall is if people would just take their stuff down to Dobbin Deck Park. So it can be processed down there because it's going to be very costly to have it all hauled down there. Right now, we have a private contractor, Thorpe, coming in to do it. But if our guys had to do it, it'd take months and months and months to do it. So if we can get the word out to please take stuff down there if you can. You know, you've got a pickup truck to start carrying it, taking it down. That will help greatly. We're also trying to, to get, be declared a disaster area so we're able, we're eligible for some FEMA money for the cleanup. These guys have been really busy and they're, they're getting, their first priority right now is to get the cemeteries and the parks cleaned up. We'll do that internally, but out in the streets, it's Thorpe we're using right now. So that was.
Yeah, thank you. Mark?
Uh, just a couple of quick things. Next Monday, Officer Walterman will start his first day at his nine-week academy. And that's out in Waterloo Shore Academy. So we've got him all put together and ready to ship out to that. He's, I guess about as excited as you can get to leave your family for nine weeks, but that can go either way. But no, he'll be taken off next Monday for that. I was working the last couple of days to put together some second quarter numbers. Something called me away yesterday, a storm or something like that. I didn't get to that, so I'll try to get those put together and, and pass them out to you guys the next meeting. And, you know, a couple of comments on yesterday. I think the, the street crew, the fire department and my department, we, we pulled together and, and it was a heck of a day. And there were private citizens jumping in and helping and, and people in their own vehicles driving around. And just something, if anything good came out of that storm. I think it was as I was driving town in the late afternoon and into the evening, to watch neighbors all man together, help each other. And then those neighbors will go to the elderly couple at the end of the block and help them. That's why we all live here, so, and that's why we do what we do, so.
Yeah, thank you. Harry?
The only thing I've got is just a reminder that this next meeting is probably when we will start the discussion on some of these fee changes for all of our utilities, quite frankly. Now, our water and sewer, we're talking about a 3% increase there. That's what's been recommended, but that, that's already in fact factored in to the budget for, for this year. The other ones have not. I know that Matt's done an awful lot of work, and he may want to say something. He's done a lot of work on the recycling thing. Feel like we're making great headway with that one. And Dave Moreland just has to prove up a few numbers for us to see what new revenue might be generated. But from the preliminary look at that with the proposed numbers on the fee increases, it looks like it gets us a long ways to where we need to be as far as, as closing the gap, particularly on the recycling thing. So, you know, how much pushback we will get for a commercial cardboard? Don't know, but we won't know until we try it and it just makes an awful lot of sense. I mean, with the loss and, and Matt pointed that out last time, with the loss of Genesis and cardboard going from something of value to something of a negative value, it, it's put, it's put everybody in a spot, particularly a city who's, who's continued to provide the service. So that's all I've got.
Thank you. Matt?
I guess I'll follow off of that. Yeah, like as Harry pointed out, it's, we were in a spot where we were having Genesis do the cardboard and now our city staff is doing it. And it's still a good service to these businesses and a nice service. And it's, it still will be cheaper than them having the expense of throwing it away to have landfill fees. So it still will be cheaper, but it'll be a nominal fee. But just, you know, everybody kind of adding a little bit will cover the cost of it. And that's all we're really trying to do, so. Also, Mark kind of took the words out of my mouth. I was just going to commend their PD and fire department folks, the last, this last day, 24 hours has been very neat to see and, and everybody kind of chipping in. That's the great thing about being here and everybody sort of helping out everybody. And so kudos to those folks. I know the golf course was hit pretty hard as well, and some of us are down helping pick up yesterday a little bit. And there's still, still a ways to go on that, which leads me into just a positive note. On the July business side at the golf course, they were up about three grand from what they were a year ago. So a lot of things are struggling right now, but the neat thing about that was that we had a lot of folks from out of town. And it was, so it was green fees and cart rental fees. And they can tell those folks that were visiting here from out of town. So that's a good thing. That's what we hope to see a lot of with the golf course to really kind of keep it going on the right direction. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Darren?
I met about cats again. The idea, one of the ideas at least, doesn't necessarily have to do with TNR. I, I put this out in an email before, but maybe it's got to go through Bob and then things that, you know, farmers just aren't going to pay for cats that they want at their farm. But pause, and I think this is a good policy. Well, adopt out a cat that's not been fixed and things like that. So I guess in the short run, and I'll, I can argue that, I wonder if we could waive the fee like pay for, or that we could pay for cats that are going to be adopted out. You know, and not that someone can bring their cat from Grand Junction and get it fixed and then bring it back. These are cats that are Jefferson cats that are going to go forward and do a vending or something where it all.
Sure. Thank you. Pat?
Yeah, police committee, we met the other day. Two major topics, a potential UTV ordinance. Kind of went through the first draft with the group there. I think we sent it over to Bob so he could take a look at it. And we'll be bringing that to, to you guys to look at fairly soon. And then probably one thing that's always on our agenda is officer retention. You know, we don't have a magic bullet on that, but I think we're going to try a couple of different things, looking at through the budget and some other things and hopefully come up with at least a few ideas, so. Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Biggest thing I had was I was at the meeting with Jim for the wastewater treatment. He covered it very well. And I too would like to thank the city crews, PD, streets, everybody. They're really, really coming through for us. It's been quite an effort. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to echo a lot of what's been saying. You know, I think that from, from the start, you know, having our law enforcement and our fire out looking for the storms early and getting those sirens off. And seemed that the city crews and law enforcement and fire worked together really well to get everything, the streets cleared and, and get things safe. And, you know, I think, I think it worked out really, really well. They've been very busy and Dave's got a good group of guys that works for him. And, and it seems like everything's just falling into place. You know, their, their plan is, is to get the, the duties that they need to get done, done. And if they can spare anybody from their department, they're going to systematically tackle the cemetery, the parks. But everybody work together instead of being spread out, everybody work together. Get the cemetery done, get the next park done and move on from there. He's got a plan and he's, he's getting it taken care of. We've, you know, I believe he was working part, Dave was working part-time for the city back when we had the directo and I remember his early 90s or late 80s. But, so he knows a little bit of, of what to do from that. And, you know, they kept fresh water for us and they kept the sewage moving. I mean, there were some hiccups along the way with, you know, some generator issues here and there. And he was able to overcome those obstacles and, and keep, keep things going, you know. So a lot of work from all departments went into this storm that we've, we've had. And there's going to be a lot more work to come, but I don't think it could have went any better than, than the job that they did. Yeah, and just remember that if, if people are able to take their own tree brush down and, and try to get it as far into the dump as you can and not dump it right, right at the beginning there because then it makes it difficult for the next person. But we've got, I think Dave's down there right now pushing brush so he can keep it open. And it sounds like it's very, very busy. So the citizens are really doing a great job helping out there. And, you know, he did want me to touch a little bit on the trees that are in the city parking. They are technically city property, but technically they are still your, you know, the citizens' trees. So we need your help on getting those taken care of. Of course, if there's a public safety issue or something, that's when the city comes down and will trim trees and do things like that. But otherwise, it is, it is still the property owner's property to, to help take care of. And, you know, I think we all work together on this. I've seen, just like Mark said, a lot of people working together, trying to get this done and get this cleaned up. And I think everybody's doing a fantastic job on that. You know, and I think everybody is aware that we're losing officer ends, or captain ends at the end of the, the month. So we are looking at all options of, I mean, we're, we're really looking at everything that we can possibly try this, try that. You know, we're getting to the point now where we're down, going to be down two officers and then have one at the academy. So we really need to buckle down on not only attracting officers here, but, but keeping them here, the ones that we do get. And there'll be more to come on that in the coming weeks, but just kind of give everybody a heads up so we can be thinking about solutions and working towards a common goal. That's all I got. Thank you.
Done.